All right, seeing that we have a full house, we will start the meeting. Going to call to order the February 13th Planning Commission meeting, and I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and will Belinda please lead us?
(inaudible)
And Madam Secretary, can I get a roll call?
Please let the record show that Commissioner O'Connor has an excused absence this evening. All other commissioners are present.
Thank you. Which moves us on to item A, which approval of the minutes from the January 23rd, 2017 meeting. Do I have a motion or any comments?
I move to approve the minutes of the January meeting.
Chairman Donner, motion?
Second.
And a second by Vice Chair McCann. Danny. Danny, did you vote?
I did. I did. No, I didn't. I did.
There we go. All right, that item passes. Good job. Moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight?
No.
No public comments, okay. I will skip reading the public comment piece. Which moves us to the consent calendar, item number two, which is a de minimis project waiver approval report from a coastal development permit, CDP 17-001, waiver to permit an addition for a new restaurant within town center located at 24532 Del Prado. I know it's on consent, but we do have a letter here, so maybe just the staff want to just... Is there anything we need to do at this, or just put it on the record?
I will just indicate that the staff person who's responsible for the project did talk to the author of the letter and clear, because there were a couple of inaccurate comments in the letter. It seemed that the author didn't understand the project, and so the planner did call the author of the letter and clarified some of those things. For example, one was there was reference to some, I think parking lifts is what the author was trying to mention, and there are no lifts on the property. Also, he mentioned two restaurants, and it was that the property owners considering two different restaurants, only one of them will take this space, it will be one restaurant. There's a patio, an outdoor patio is part of the restaurant, but, so those items were clarified to the author of the letter, and from my understanding from staff, the author appreciated the clarification and indicated that they did not have concern, those concerns. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I didn't know they were locked out, so yeah, we'll go back to that. That was, but we have an item before us, so we either have a motion to approve the consent...
I have a question.
Mr. Murphy.
So is the, is the letter now withdrawn completely?
Sean, why don't you come on up, since you're the one who had the conversation with the author?
Sorry about that, I was keeping everyone company outside. Yes, I did have a really good conversation with them, they understood about the confusion of it, and they indicated that they were in support of the proposed business going in, they just wanted their concerns to be on the record, and that was all. But they were in support of them and coming in and hope they'd be successful.
Okay, so it's, from what you heard, is it your understanding that this then has been withdrawn? These issues or complaints or suggestions have been withdrawn?
Their concerns regarding the inaccuracies of the letter have been withdrawn. Again, they've indicated to me that they just wanted to have their concerns about parking in general on the record, but they, as I said, they indicated they were supportive of the project and understood what was before the Planning Commission this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a consent calendar item which requires a motion and a vote. Do I hear a motion or to move the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Vice Chair with the first, and Council, Planning Commissioner Donner with the second. Go ahead and vote. And that item passes. All right. And then what I'd like to do is go back to public comments, as long as the Commissioner's okay with that, since the door was locked. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak on public comments, which is items other than those on tonight's agenda, now is your time.
I have one for item number four.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so then that would take us to item number three, public hearing, coastal development permit, CDP 16-0010, and minor site development permit, SDP 16-0043M, to allow additions and alterations to an existing single-family dwelling located within the Dana Point specific plan at 24722 El Camino Capistrano. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner Belinda Dynes will give the staff report.
Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, Chairman Nelson, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynes, Staff Planner for the proposed project at 24722 El Camino Capistrano. This project is before you for review and consideration of a coastal development permit, 16-0010, and minor site development permit, 16-0043, for the McNutt residence. And I apologize if my voice is a little hoarse tonight, so please let me know if you need any clarification on my presentation. As shown on the, this aerial map, the subject site is located at the end of Golden Lantern, at the corner of El Camino Capistrano, immediately adjacent to Heritage Park. The site is located within the Dana Point specific plan, and is developed with an existing 6,629 square foot, single-family residence, and a three-car garage. Here's a photograph of the existing one-story structure as viewed from the street. The site overlooks Dana Point Harbor and abuts a steep coastal bluff edge along the rear. The property is located within the city's coastal zone. The overall scope of work involves primarily an interior remodel and minor addition of 140 square feet toward the front of the structure, under the existing eaves. There are some exterior modifications proposed to the existing pool courtyard, including reconfiguration of the existing pool and a new covered patio, which is centrally located on the property and away from the bluff edge. The property is not located within a homeowners association. The improvements subject to a coastal development permit are seen here on the site plan highlighted in yellow, for new landscape, hardscape, and minor grading within 50 feet of a coastal bluff edge. The proposed living area additions are highlighted in orange, and highlighted in pink is the proposed fencing, subject to a minor site development permit for height. For your reference, here's the floor plan of the main structure and three-car garage. The proposed addition expands an existing fourth bedroom with a new closet and bathroom. The new bathroom is proposed to the existing detached poolhouse, which includes a small wet bar. Exterior upgrades are proposed to the existing structure, which include standing seam metal roofing, smooth white plaster, stone veneer, and wood siding finishes, as shown on these elevations. These improvements are in keeping with a soft contemporary style. Proposed demolition associated with the remodel will not exceed more than 40% of the existing structure. Here's the proposed color material sample board with natural tones. The Dana Point specific plan identifies three required findings that must be met in order to grant approval of the coastal development permit. Staff has provided analysis in support of the proposed findings, as detailed in the draft resolution and attachment to the staff report. The commission must find that the proposed project is in conformity with the certified local coastal program, the application is consistent with the purpose and intent of the Orange County zoning code and the Dana Point specific plan, and that the project conforms with the public access and public recreation policies of the California Coastal Act. The proposed improvements within the 40-foot rear bluff setback are shown to the right of the yellow line. The new drought-tolerant landscaping is proposed to replace existing landscape, and no irrigation is proposed within this area. Minor grading is proposed, and the applicant has submitted grading, drainage, and erosion control plans that have been reviewed by the city's Public Works and Engineering Department to ensure that runoff is diverted away from the bluff face. In addition to life plantings, the applicant proposes a combination of artificial turf and engraided pavers within the 40-foot setback. The orange line, excuse me, the pink line indicates a 15-foot wide public access easement that was recorded on the property back in 2004. If the city decides to improve the public pedestrian trail in the future, the property owner will be required to remove any private improvements within the easement area. As for finding three, the proposed project does not have significant impacts to public access or public recreation. 15-foot public pedestrian easement exists on the property. The proposed improvements will not impair existing public scenic coastal views as seen from Heritage Park. Furthermore, public access exists 700 feet to the east through Heritage Park, down the coastal bluff, along pedestrian stairs. There are two specific site development permit findings that are required in the Orange County zoning code for granting higher fence height, more than six feet in the required side yard. The findings are that the heightened location of the fence or the wall will not result in or create a traffic hazard, and that the fence will not create a condition that may be incompatible with other uses in the vicinity. Here's a photograph of the existing side property line facing the parking lot at Heritage Park. The existing mature landscaping in the park will remain as is. The existing and new improvements are shown on these site elevations, and in pink showing the proposed fencing. While the height of the fence on the park side is proposed at nine foot six inches, the green line shows the existing grade on the interior side of the courtyard, which would provide a five-foot high fence from the pool and covered patio area on the inside. The existing block wall will be refinished with smooth plaster, and additional fencing will be horizontal wood siding and a natural stained finish, which will blend with the existing landscaping. The proposed fencing will not impact existing backup or maneuvering for existing public parking at the park. The contrasted materials between the wood fence and the block wall will help break up the perceived mass of the wall. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with Dana Point specific plan, Orange County zoning code, and adopted local coastal plan. Staff recommends approval of CDP 16-0010 and minor site development permit, 16-0043, subject to the findings and conditions as written in the draft resolution. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding the project and the staff report, and I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the staff?
Just one question. The existing block wall, will that stay the same height, and the wood extension goes on top of that?
Yes, the height of the existing block wall will remain as is, but it will be refinished with smooth stucco.
Any questions? I had a couple of questions for you. On that 15-foot easement, is there a condition in, that the applicant understands that they would have to remove any of those items if the city did somehow come to determine that we wanted to build some pathway through there?
Yes, Chairman Nelson, in the draft resolution, under condition number nine, specifically states that the property owner or any future successors will be required, if pedestrian trail of some sort is to be developed in the future, that the, it is the property owner's responsibility to remove the private improvements within that 15-foot easement.
Okay, great. And then the other question or comment, I guess, maybe it's more of a question. The landscaping that is on the, would be the east side, where we have the extra high wall, the nine-foot wall, are we measuring from that, the grade adjacent to, so on the east side of that wall, is that where we're getting to the nine feet?
Correct. So the nine foot, six feet is measured from the perspective from the park.
Okay. So it's not from the exact adjacent grade, it's actually further away?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Chairman, Vice Chair?
On the, on the 15-foot easement, that's an existing recorded easement, that's not a new condition, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Seeing that we don't have any more questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing. We have no, all right, then I'll close the public hearing. And I'll look to my fellow commissioners to discuss and make a motion.
Hearing no further discussion, I will move that we approve the coastal development permits, CDP 160010, and minor site development permit, SDP 160043M, to allow additions and alterations to an existing single-family dwelling located within the Dana Point specific plan at 24722 El Camino Capistrano.
All right, Commissioner Donner has made a motion.
Second.
And Vice Chair McCann has seconded. Is there any discussion or want to vote? So I would just say that I'm going to support this, because I believe, well, staff's done a great job outlining the conditions, but I think just for the record, that, you know, we, that the project meets all the conditions in the staff report, that the wall actually is consistent with the minor SDP, and I would move to, I would support the project based on those findings.
I walk by it every week, I'm really happy to see they're going to make it really nice.
Yeah, I would just like to mention that, you know, we're all very protective of Heritage Park, and knowing that this is all going to be condensed into the property that's already there, and they're not going to be, the remodeling or renovation is not going to raise the roof, and the kinds of things we all worry about that are very precious for us here in Dana Point, and I certainly appreciate the owner's care and consideration about that, and it's, I think it's a good opportunity, yes, again, to add on to the pedestrian trail, although it may not happen for a long time. And it seems like the heights, the maximum heights of 28 feet and the other numbers pretty much remain the same. Let's see, one more comment I had. I particularly liked the kinds of materials that were selected to go through, go forward on this remodel renovation, and I think that it looks like it's a very, very good plan. I support it.
Mr.?
I just wanted to mention that I agree, I'm very supportive of the project, I think it looks great, I think they've done a great job of, you know, refreshing their property, and I, in my opinion, the findings are supportive of, you know, moving forward with the project, including the wall height.
All right, so it sounds like we've all chimed in, let's go ahead and vote. Item passes 4-0. Congratulations and thank you. All right, moving on, we have the next item on the agenda. And that is... My apologies, I can move it backwards here. It's in the front. I always go to the wrong tab, I don't know what it is about me. Okay, moving on to public, item four under public hearing, signed program permit, SPP 16-004 for the multi-tenant commercial building located at 34418 Pacific Coast Highway, Dana Arts Plaza. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Danny Jamudi, Associate Planner, will give the staff report.
Thank you for the introduction, Ursula, Chairman. Good evening Chairman Nelson, fellow planning commissioners. Tonight's topic covers the establishment of a signed program for an existing commercial building known as the Dana Arts Plaza within the city's town center. The Dana Arts Plaza is located on the east side of Pacific Coast Highway, between Ruby Lantern and Granada Drive, within the city's town center. The site contains an existing two-level building within six tenants and a parking lot at the rear bordering the alley. The proposed signed program and future signage is the final piece of a recently remodeled, recently completely, complete remodel for a commercial building and site that became necessary after the building sustained significant fire damage back in 2014. Section 9.37.060 of the city zoning code requires approval of a signed program for any newer upgrading single enterprise, which proposes three or more signs on site. Dana Arts Plaza is designed with six suites, which are leased to various tenants, and consequently, a signed program is necessary based on the total number of signs proposed. Once approved, the updated sign program will provide regulations and guidelines for the all-new Dana Arts Plaza signage. So the sign program was designed to provide all tenants visibility on one or both streets facing frontages along Granada and PCH. The subject building has three eligible building frontages, PCH, Granada Drive, and the San Marino Place parking lot towards the alley. They can be used towards calculating the total sign area, so all three there can be used towards this total. The Dana Point sign ordinance allows the total sign area for a commercial center to exceed 100 square feet, subject to the approval of a sign program and based on the building frontage. Although no signage is being added to the building frontage facing the alley, this building frontage faces a parking lot and is included as permissible lineal frontage in calculating the total sign area permitted for the site. Since the proposed sign area is less than the eligible lineal building frontage, the sign program complies. So here we have a couple, the existing elevations versus the proposed elevations on site. The sign program proposes a total of four sign types to be mounted along both the PCH and Granada frontages. I will review each of these sign types in more detail within the following slides. First off is your tenant identification wall signs. There'll be six of these placed on site, and each tenant will be allowed one non-illuminated acrylic sign to be a maximum of 10.75 square feet. The acrylic copy and logos are specified to be white in color and be contained within the boundary of each individual panel. To mimic an awning, the tenant's sign frames will have a skirt and be set at a 20-degree angle off the wall directly above each suite. So next we have the center identification sign and secondary tenant signage, which is facing the Granada frontage. So the applicant has proposed 11, you know, one 11-square-foot wall-mounted center ID sign to read in white art deco font, Dana Arts Plaza. Additionally, the applicant has proposed these six non-illuminated changeable tenant panels mounted in line under the center ID sign. The secondary tenant wall signs are proposed at 9.5 square feet each, and limit copy to white with a black background. Finally, we have the necessary street addressing sign. Two and a half square foot, the street addressing sign will be mounted in the center of the first floor of the gallery along the PCH frontage. Pursuant to the sign exemption section of the code, square footage of street addressing signs less than the two and a half square feet shall not be counted towards the maximum allowable sign area for a premise as required by law. Staff finds that the proposed sign program would provide a visually attractive and consistent signage theme to the recently renovated building. Additionally, all signage meets the area limitations of section 9.37.150D of the sign ordinance, which allows one square foot of sign area for each lineal foot of building frontage along the public right-of-way or parking lot. The signage would constitute an enhancement to the remodeled building and overall site improvements, while providing signage opportunities for all tenants within the center. Staff accordingly supports the proposed sign program and recommends approval of SPP 16-004. That's it for my presentation, and please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Danny. All right, bring it back to the commission for any questions.
Just so I'm clear, the, the building that's right next to the arts, that is not included in this?
Correct, that is a separate owner, separate building.
Is that a separate building or, or an attached?
It is attached on the, on the north side, however, it is a separate building and separate lot.
Quick question for you, Danny, on the, if you go back to the slide that has the elevation where it says tenant identification wall signs?
Slide, right here.
Perfect. I'm looking at it right here, it's got to be up there, right?
No worries.
I think I'm smarter than that, but I guess I'm not.
No, it's okay.
So, there's notes on here where it says suite one, suite six, I'm assuming that's just, is that, are those signs, is that just on here to denote that that's a suite?
Correct, that notes the, the suite number. That is not a...
Those are not additional signs?
Exactly.
That was, that was my only question, thank you.
It's a bit confusing.
Quick question, Danny. On the, the, the street address, is that required to be visible?
It is, it's required to be visible at the, within the right-of-way, so highly visible. I think PCH is the requirement for this one, as is the address is on PCH.
So if the palm trees grow up?
Palm trees grow, they may have to move their sign, yeah.
Okay.
Be up to the United States Postal Office, though.
Thank you.
Danny, these, you said are non-illuminated?
Correct, they're not illuminated.
Could they have been illuminated if the applicant wanted?
They could have, correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight? All right. All right, perfect. We have one speaker, Penny Maynard.
My name is Penny Maynard, and...
My name is Penny Maynard, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I'm the former executive at the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce, and I now have, I'm president at Dana Beach Tourism. And I support this signed program permit, and I urge you to vote for it, according to the recommendation, you will, I'm sure, and because it increases the visibility of the named businesses, and if people can see, you know, that there are all of these different businesses, they're more apt to come, because years ago, we had an issue with signage and not enough signage, and people didn't know, and I particularly like what is on Granada. I like the way that monument, it's called a monument sign, but it isn't what I consider truly a monument sign, but, and it has the names of all the businesses, so it's, when people are, are driving north, they can see all the names in one location without having to look around and, and look from side to side, so I support it completely, I think it's a great idea and it's a great help to business. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion, and I'll lead off, 'cause... I actually saw this building on fire, and if the applicant or the owners in the audience, which I assume is over here, it's great to see it came back, it come back to life, and it came back to life in a really nice way. And a lot of buildings, when they get salvaged, they do the best that they can. This looks amazing, these signs class it up even better, it certainly meets our code, and I can easily make the findings that it's consistent with our code, it's compatible with our, with the adjacent and surrounding neighborhood, it's certainly an enhancement to that neighborhood, and I would, I drive by here every day, and in fact, to Penny's point, there's a tenant in here that I wouldn't know about if it wasn't for their sign, so I absolutely agree that signage done right is critical for the success of tenants, and applaud you guys for doing such a great job on your remodel and working through what must have been a pretty tragic situation. Anybody else? Motion?
Yeah, I just, well, I think it looks great, and I walk by, and I like it, I think it's a tremendous improvement, so congratulations, I plan to support it.
Yeah, I'll just echo the comments of my fellow commissioners, I think you've done a beautiful job with the building, and the signage is, is great and needed, so I'm supportive of the project.
Chairman Murphy? Commissioner Murphy?
I truly support it as well. I think, having watched this building be brought back up, I love the linear, I love the, it's just so clean and, and so uncluttered, and anybody driving by, which I did again today, just to see if I was, you know, in a hurry going up Coast Highway, but I had plenty of time to take it all in, and I think it's, it's, it's very tasteful, and I support it.
Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the signed program permit SPP 16-004 for the multi-tenant commercial building located at 34418 Pacific Coast Highway, Dana Arts Plaza.
Second.
Second. Let's vote. Item passes 4-0, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I think... Moves on to item E, old business. There is no old business, so we're on to F, new business. I don't think we have any new business, right? Staff reports, do we have any staff reports?
Last time, I said I didn't have any, and I had great commissioners remind me of some things I should have mentioned, but I can't think of anything today, staff, so we'll try it again, I have no staff reports this evening.
Alright, which brings us to Commissioner comments. Start to my left, Commissioner Donner.
I'd just like to say I attended the South Cove groundbreaking, and I'm really excited to see the Hobie Memorial and the Surf statues that are going to be developed at that site. I think it's gonna really make an impact coming off the Five into the, into, into our city, I think it's really gonna be great.
Cool, thank you. I did not attend that, I was skiing in Whistler, so, but I wanted to go. That said, I think there was, I saw an article in the paper about the Marines that we support looking for donations, so for all you out in the audience, if you feel like you wanna be helpful, there's some information out there, I know the council donated some money, and it sounds like a pretty important thing, so. Other than that, I attended, went to several restaurants during restaurant week, I don't know if any of you else did, but it was pretty fun. That's it, for me.
Nothing, nothing specific, just, again, appreciate staff and the thorough job that they do, and obviously, working with the applicants and resolving all issues so that when it comes to us, it's just all clean and easy, and you guys obviously, you know, ferreted out all the issues and, and made it easy, so we appreciate that.
I second what all the gentlemen said, and I also wanted to mention, I was with Commissioner Donner there at the Hobie Memorial and the luncheon, and I don't know who, who asked for that weather, but it was fantastic. It was so bright, and it was just this golden-white sun, and it was perfectly blue sky, and to see the hobie cats there and the other artwork, and to see everybody in such a cheerful mood, and a little, you could feel the excitement, and, and I think a great part of that is what staff does and how it's presented, and so I say, yay!
Alright, moving on to adjournments. Next, so we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on Monday, February 27th, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter, in the City Council chambers located at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210, Dana Point, California.